Thank you, dear Lord, for this day you've given us. We pray, Lord, for your strength and all that you, Lord, receive your strength and will in our decisions today, Lord, in our discussions. Send your name and pray.
Please join me in honoring the nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one nation, indivisible.
We have a topic meeting with opportunities for members of the board. If you speak, if you wish, the board can comment, presentations, please limit such as we can. Next title is the enrollment update.
Good afternoon, members of the board. What I'm actually presenting are our summer enrollments. Okay, summer's actually ended this past Sunday, so I wanted to give you an update on what happened last summer. In our summer, we actually have a summer one and a summer two, okay? Bottom half of the session is an individual session, but I just wanted to get all the enrollments together, okay? So what you're looking at are CGC worldwide enrollments and those who put Texas enrollment, all Texas enrollment, and the continental and native enrollment. And as you can see, unfortunately, we're still in a deficit right now as far as our enrollments still have not climbed back to pre-COVID. And so we did have a 12.7% decrease in number of students. We had an 8.7% decrease in enrollment and a minus 9% decrease in special classes, okay? And this slide is just showing our Texas enrollments, okay? And this includes the central campus, Fort Cabo, some high service area, and all our distance learns. Learn as well, okay? And so we have a deficit of 10.7% decrease in students, a deficit of 6.5% in enrollment, about the same as special classes. And this is a breakdown of all of our distance learning enrollments that are taught out of the central campus. And there are management degrees, we handle all early and large distance learning classes. And it wasn't as, our business learning enrollments do kind of stay the same. You know, there's, it's not as large of a degree class for our business learning enrollments. And so we had like a 5.7% decrease in enrollments. You can see 7,270 enrollments compared to 7,700. And the next slide are our continental and native enrollments, okay? It's really difficult to compare because we lost some of the sites in the continental. We only have nine active sites compared to what we had last summer. And so there's, it's not a really good comparison. San Diego and Navy, you know, we closed down San Diego, Navy place. So there's not too much Navy. And this is a slide on our dual credit enrollments. I believe last, at the last presentation, somebody asked me to write some information on the high school enrollments. And this is a comparison of our total high school enrollments this past year compared to the year before, okay? And this is actually academic year, fall, spring, and summer, okay? And so we had 2,376 students this year compared to 3,395. So we only had a deficit of 8,000 students, okay? And our enrollments, they were behind by 5,270. And our special credit hours were behind by 5,270. And that actually is an NFI presentation on the enrollments. Do you have any questions?
We have any. Our office is why we've got a deficit again and again and again. We don't have any fewer population in West Bell County or Port El County. We don't have any fewer population in the outline regions. We've got more people than we ever had. I understand the common health care stuff, I'm worried about that, I'm probably local. Why do we have fewer students taking college classes compared to other colleges and universities and second gen?
Well, I believe overall in the United States, all community colleges are operating on the same pace compared to what they had been before pre-COVID. But you're right, our enrollments should have been, by now, we should have seen our enrollments come back up. And one of the, one of the reasons why is that a lot of people aren't putting as much emphasis on college, okay? This doesn't mean the same thing as it did years ago. And there's so many other competitive institutions that aren't racially accredited. So I think we have increased competition. Our military has dropped their tuition assistance fund, it can only be funded for 15 hours, rest support is not relevant. There's also a dollar, $250 is a special credit hour. So, and especially when Army, from the Army Ed to the Army Act nine, that really hurt everyone. It actually hurt the social, okay? Because the company that, in the conversion, they weren't a grateful.
I still have a problem with that. I don't see the, I think the military's going to continue to go in the opposite direction that we wanted to go in because of all of these things they put in place to try to change what was going on, what was working. And they tried to fix it and messed it up, so that's a problem. I think a lot of schools too, I mean, some of the college presidents that I've talked to are experiencing the same thing with their dual credit students because they're waiting for House Bill eight, how that's all going to play out. And we don't know that yet. I think Dr. Carter's team is on top of, on top of that, maybe she can rest that later, but there are, until that plays out, then the school districts are kind of falling back, I think some of the kids are too, so. There's a lot of things going, it's not one thing, it's just a lot of things. And workforce, you know, higher wages in these areas where kids don't want to go to school, they can go make 18, 20, 22 dollars an hour. They're going, why do I need that? Plus the state centers, we're competing with the local school districts, state centers. They produce the same kinds of things we do, automotive, electronics, welding, computer science, cosmetology. And they do all that and they get their licenses, they can go to work, they don't need to come out here anymore. So I, to me, that was one of the biggest downfalls that our education agencies have allowed to happen in the state. Because now those, those kids aren't there. And then all the workforce is going to go back. But now we're seeing all the workforce wanting to go back to work, we're hoping to start picking that up because now their kids and their grandkids are off and out of their house and they're trying to find something. So we're hoping that we can attract more older, older population to back us up. There's just a lot of different reasons, it's not just one thing. And we're not the only one that's having that problem.
And may I add that we have some preliminary numbers for fall. And the central campus, all campus numbers have gone up slightly. Now, distance learning's gone down, but the fall numbers are looking good as far as on campus.
Around 4% up.
We're still registering.
Yes, yes. And classes, our Friday and weekend classes start August 18th, and our regular 16-week classes, monthly classes, start.
The service area classes haven't started, well, they've probably started this week. So those, well, those kids haven't registered yet, so those numbers still have to come in from all the school districts that we're talking about.
Since the economy has gone down, what are we not doing that somebody else is doing to attract those students? That's, that's my basic question.
They're more.
One time, where you left the state?
We did, when we were part of the Army Ed and we were the original 13, there were only 13 schools in part of the Army Ed. And there's just hundreds and hundreds of schools that are teaching online courses now. Plus the downsizing of military installations, also next, that's going to affect all students.
All these kids don't want to sign up with us, it's going to take four years to get our two-year degree. So they'll just sign up at the four-year institution, be done with. Maryland, S I U, other institutions, so. And the loss of the military enrollments has hurt that distance learning.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Okay, thank you.
I accidentally omitted the chancellor's update, so.
Well, the only thing I want to report, some people wonder how two chancellors can be in the same position in college. And so I wanted to just report on the transition, I think is going very smoothly. Dr. Carter and I began really working close together on August, on July the first. And then she started trying to backfill her position. So come July the first, I relinquished everything to her for all of her roles and all that. I think I'm there as an advisory capacity if she likes, and I think so far it's a no question.
Next two items on the agenda are deal with aviation, and it's been requested those be tabled. Is there a question about that? Which one's right? Maybe you have another? They were both, okay. All right, I'm number seven, official on your proposed budget.
If you don't have a two chancellor, it's not bad, I could use to play two parents against each other. Not a problem at all.
Did it work?
For those of us that don't know how to play that. I survived. Okay, you should have a copy, a draft copy of the proposed budget. You know, we had a fairly lengthy discussion the last workshop about the key items in the budget. And there has been virtually no change from that. So I don't have a lot to share with you, but I'll go over a few things, especially, you know, we do have a new book board member. And it's also good for people just to get used to how the budget looks and what we have in there. The first section of the budget before we begin the first tab is some required items that you have to have in there with resolutions. It will have, it does not have in your current draft, a chancellor message. It was finalized over the weekend, this printed prior to that, and also an organizational chart. Dr. Carter has made few changes in the organization, which I think we would all expect when you hire a new chancellor. There's some changes that are made, and you will see those in the final version next week. So they are out there and they are, they're very minimal. The chancellor's message was written by Dr. Carter. She's played a big hand in writing it for the last several years, but this one was one with her as the chancellor. Because even though we have two, the budget will be run under her leadership with Mr. Yanovski on the third floor. So the next section, the very first tab is tuition fees. And good place to start and to look, and you can see on the very first page of that, which is page number five, it shows what our current rates are for tuition as well as differential tuition. You can see that on the first page. If you'll remember, a year ago, we presented to the board and approved a tuition rate increase for a five-year period. So this includes new tuition rates that don't affect for the current fall semester. And then we've got 40 years more down the line that we've already brought forth. We thought that was a good idea to do for planning purposes on our end as well as students, so they know in advance. The next page shows fees that are being charged and there's a bunch of them. And then the page after that, you'll see a section called tuition and fees, section waivers, which I think is pretty important if you at some point have fun, take a read of those and see how many items that we are mandated by the state that we have to provide either free tuition or discounted tuition. There is, there are, there is one in here that we're not required to do any longer, but we brought it to the fourth floor as an option. But it's also, it's one of those that's not, probably not worth the bad publicity to not award it any longer. But also, we probably also waive maybe $3,000, $4,000 an year. But it's above approved if we waive it, that's basically the senior citizen discount that we offer. And it awards them classes as long as that class has room for them. So it's, you don't have a lot of them, but it would be one that I think we would have, we discussed it years ago at a board meeting, that it would have a lot more negative impact than, of course, taken it out. But those waivers that were required to do last year when the audit was done, it cost the college about $60,000. So that's revenue that we have no control over. I've drawn off books, the biggest one is the military waiver. And that's because all military that are, state of Texas here will pay the district rate, whether or not they're a resident, because they're considered a resident if they're a military. Wonderful benefit, but it hits us a lot harder than it would probably kind of do to college if you think about the military that we have across the street. So about $60,000 that came off the books last year. Then there's some information following that section on refunds. The biggest thing to note is our refund schedule for the state of Texas is dictated by the state. We have followed their guidelines, so that's what you see in there. The next section is where you get down to the nuts and bolts of the revenue expenditures. You can see it charts, two pie charts. The page I'd like to look at is page 16, which is the consolidated budget. And it compares the numbers from the current budget to the proposed budget. As I said, we discussed these major items in detail at the last workshop. But as a reminder for some of the more important ones and the larger ones, tuition fees, you'll notice right off the top, we have decreased the revenue projection, many reasons, and Dr. Welsh shared them, both of them, just a few minutes ago. You know, we're no longer in Europe offering face-to-face. We have quite a few less sites and enrollments here are down. So we have lowered the number for our revenue projection. Hopefully, it's a number that we can attain. And it's still, you know, if you compare these numbers to previous years, you will see what we budgeted for the locations that we still have, mainly our Texas operations. Where we are, we have budgeted a goal to try to hit where we were at the pandemic year, which it's kind of sad that we're trying to get back to a pandemic year because as you know, halfway through the year, the pandemic hit, the numbers went down. Luckily, we were poised and able to move right in because we did have a strong distance learning base. But that's very close to where we want to budget it in the coming year. State appropriations, a couple of sections down, 15.9 compared to 14.5. We spoke about this last time as well. Our appropriations for the first year of the BLM are up 1.4 million. That's kind of under a proposal of the state to, to Bob's term, hold harmless everybody because we've mentioned several times at this meeting already, House Bill eight has major changes to what our funding is going to be. Matter of fact, after this meeting, we're going to hear a little more about a piece of that, which is FAS. There's a group of us, task force, how to put together to hear a little more about it. The rules will be finalized until next week, the same day we're meeting as board, to know what the FAS and House Bill eight. But then that really, we still don't know for sure what that's going to do to our 2025 appropriations because those rules aren't expected to be in place until January of 2024. So the increase of the 1.4 million is wonderful for the current year. But at this point, we really don't know what that's number going to be for the second year of the BLM, which is the first in all the years I've worked with college, as long as we have up years. And we can count on the number from year one to year two being what we were told with potentially minimal changes at this point in time. No idea what we're going to be, but what I can tell you is we are, the task force that's been put together is looking at the way funding, what we think it's going to be, when we find out for sure, we know what it's going to be, as I shared with you last time, we will put things in place here to make sure that we're getting the most we can based upon what the requirements are. We're going to figure out how to turn what we do into the largest appropriations, and we'll work on those items. Once we know what the rules are, it's kind of hard now to make those plans because we don't know what the rules are. We're getting there. Expenditures, which is the most bottom half of this sheet, we, we put this budget together holding the line on expenditures. If you all recall, for the last several years, we've had fairly nice salary increases as well as retention incentives that we paid. We didn't feel that we could balance the budget this year, and we couldn't have if we provided any increases this year, so there are none. Most, the departmental budgets did not have increases in the, well, we've done a line that we feel that hold in line at the present time is about this. So that's how this budget will go. You will notice the one increase that you could see there, but lines off from the bottom is capital improvements. There's a plan of items that we need to do for some of our, some of our buildings. Some of our departments are going to be improvements. There are some large ones out there in the future, i.e. a major improvement to the sewer technology area. The biggest thing there is though, at present time, once again, what does that mean? My eyes probably don't think that there's going to be as much emphasis on what's currently in that building, but maybe what new programs need to put into that building. Once we figure out really what they need to be based upon workforce needs and what the state of Texas is saying are the key programs that they're going to fund better, better. So while there's going to be something down the line for that, there's some minor dollars in this year for some planning. We really don't know what route we're going to take until we find out more about the rules that are going down the line. The nice thing is, we have, until this recent downfall of enrollments, have been very successful out here in Long Oak Center, Texas College. So we were able to build whatever you want to call it, any term that you like to use, a reserve, a rainy day fund. So we are going to be using some of those rainy day funds to fund those capital improvements. We are very fortunate that we're in a position that we can do that. We don't have to float a bond, which no matter when you float a bond, it costs you more money to float it than you get out of it. So as we all know, interest in whether it's a small rate or a large rate, it's interesting. So we are fortunate that we don't have to do that to fund these capital improvements. I will share with you that what you have in front of you has already changed. We had a telephone call yesterday between the financial group and the chancellors based upon something Larry's going to share with you in a minute, which is our insurance quote that came in. We got an insurance quote that came in Friday, that was 550, $600,000 more than what we was going to spend in the primary. And those of you, all of us that lived here for a while in Texas, and you know, the last several years, there have been some large claims, not just by Central Texas College, but by a bunch of entities in our sector, the public sector, based upon the different catastrophes that have been changing. So not only did our rate go up, the company that we've used for the last several years didn't want business anymore. They got out of the business, so there is a new company that we're using. So that rate was significantly higher than what we had forecasted when we built this budget. So when the budget was built and we saw that, that capital projects number that you've seen currently right now at 6.3 million, well, we've actually pulled a billion dollars out of that. We have a project in there that we, we're going to need to do with some time, but it's not one that has to happen today. And we rerouted the billion dollars from there up into our facilities, plant maintenance and support budget, which is where we pay our insurance fund. Because that insurance bill, like I said at the current time, is going to be about $560,000 higher than what we had forecasted. And I'm not going to steal a whole lot of Larry's thunder, but it may not be enough coverage to cover all of our buildings. So we have some very critical looking that we need to do to determine if we have enough coverage, if there were to be a catastrophe, I can imagine. I don't really like to think about it, but Gerald is not that far away. If a tornado ripped through here like it did through Gerald, and how much damage would happen if we took out buildings from the admin building all the way through the nurse building? We're talking hundreds of millions of dollars, so we'd be crazy not to have the coverage. But we've just got to put the right coverage together with what's being covered at the bottom now. So that's the only change that has occurred from what you have in your hands.
It doesn't change the balance?
It doesn't change the balance because I pulled it, I just pulled it from one group, I completely took it out of an improvement that we were going to do, rolled it into insurance. At the present time, it's higher than what our current insurance quote is, but we're looking at potentially increasing coverage, which may run that number up if you want. You don't spend the money, it will be transferred into the health, it's either going insurance or instead of going back.
Yes, sir.
How is the new company that we've selected, Travis, how did we select them?
We are acquired by law, and if I make a mistake, correct me, because he is the purchasing expert, but we have to go for a competitive bid, and there's, there are different, different pieces of that, but they were selected in that manner. And we do that, it's a requirement of state if we follow state guidelines. So with all of this in place, we do have a balanced budget of about $450,000, but you see that it's balanced. Now, once again, you have to remember, a budget and a financial statement aren't the same. So while we do have a budget balance here, that doesn't mean your financial statement is going to completely mirror this because there are items in the budget that show in a different form than they do on a financial statement. And once again, if we're moving money from reserve, that won't show as they move from reserve technically on a profit-loss. I use that term loosely because colleges don't do that, but everyone out here understands what that is, on a financial statement. That's an expenditure. So even though we're, if we move the money out of reserve, when we write that check to pay for that insurance, that will be as an expenditure and not a transfer from reserve on a financial statement. So we, we do have a budget, it's $100 million, which is $5 million less than it was last year. But once again, we have, we no longer have national face operations in Europe. We have a contract that at present time is good for one month. We have a contract on Fort Hood that's a pretty significant contract, but it's not in there for the whole year yet. We're anticipating that contract being left, but we don't talk contract with people sometimes, so we're waiting for that to happen. But other than that, everything is very similar to what it has been previously, what it was when we discussed a month ago. The following pages behind this are just different iterations of the same numbers. It's broken down slightly different on the next page. And then after that, there's about 10 pages where it breaks it down by departmental categories. So, you know, you could go through there and say, well, what are we spending in that? So all of, they are the same numbers, they're just in different formats that all rolled up.
Any questions, comments? You will be available, I'm sure, between now and next Tuesday.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm available, if anybody has my cell phone number, let me know. I've called in, I must be working, there's not, there's not a problem with that.
And you will present this resolution for approval?
Correct, next month, next week, when I walk in, I'm basically going to say, recommend approval. I'm not going to go into any detail unless there's questions that need to be answered from what I'm working with.
Thank you. It's out of the top range of interest, so we should set that up. Going to have to do this in large things. Thank you. Obviously, you can approve the fifty K list. You recall, the fifty K list authorizes administration issued blanket purchase orders. The vendors on the list will give the services for purchase of sixty thousand warrants aggregate during fiscal year beginning September fourth, twenty twenty thirty. For our needy board member, I just want to make a note, all the vendors on the fifty K lists, they're part of a cooperative, or they're under a board proof contract, and they're always procured with the Texas statutory law, under the Texas statutory law and CTC policies of researchers. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Some of those estimates are pretty good-sized jumps over this year's expenditure.
Actually, they would have actually been below, not for the insurance things that Mr. Liberty had discussed, we actually, our expenditures would have actually been below last year's. The increased total is a direct result of the insurance.
So that, those estimates are built into the budget?
Yes, sir. So the VPO amount, you see, a majority of them are actually born out of contract. So the contract kind of dictates, so as we've been dealing with inflation, we've been dealing with a different, for the variable market, the contracts that we have actually have predicted year to year, and yes, they do have year-to-year increases. But an example is a year ago, Mr. Gaines was able to bring a motion, something to dial tremendous interference, which helps keep their spin down. So while the contracts do have an escalation, it's not completely set, and we're always charging some version down, those costs. But here in this case, with the issue of the insurance, it did increase and pushed it over, but it was that particular lot on actual property.
Have we tried to renegotiate that, that lot with the contractor?
I'll let, I'll let Larry speak to it more, but the way the process works, Mr. Lee talked on it, is that we put up the RFP, and our insurance is, we have variable segments of the insurance, and then we have different insurance companies bid on those sections. The issue that we're dealing with right now, and Larry will speak to it, is just that we're not liable for insurance on some of the property. And so as he's trying to negotiate better prices, and the company's working to try to find the best price that we can, it's just, we understand, I'm aware that the market in the insurance right now is very difficult, and you have them walking out of different states, simply because of the amount of the claims that we're talking about. So, Texas.
Thank you.
Chairman, Chairman, Chancellor, board members, today I will present, before you compare us insurance, this is the year twenty fourth. A premium this year across all lives, insurance is going to run college costs somewhere around one point seven million dollars. This is a significant increase due to several factors. When I talk about these factors, I hope by brokerage company. So the first company we have is a liability insurance. The total premium for duty liability, airport liability, airport hall liability, and law enforcement comes in at one hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. This was a small increase due to us adding a new aircraft. To anticipate some savings there, when we take the old aircraft off our books. We also saw a little savings when it comes to professional police, due to the number of exposures being lower than it were last year. Based on market conditions, we find this to be very fair, and next week, we will add to approval for option year two of this contract with the line. For Arthur J. Gallagher, risk management firm, their premium came in at four hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars for next fiscal year. This company provides terrorism, crime prevention, international coverage, automobile coverage for our CTC buildings, leisure liability, general liability, excess liability, educator liability, liability for internships, partnerships, and workers' compensation. For this particular firm, we did get a six percent premium credit because of the number of sexual harassment and type nine offenses that we've done over the last twelve months. We saw a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar deduction on workers' compensation due to decrease in the number of claims. And we also saw three thousand one hundred and fifty in segments due to no longer having the Europe campus. Now, we did see some increases here, terrorism, you can obviously see those increases because of the number of mass shootings across the country and within the state. There was about a thousand dollar increase there. But based on everything you see in the current market, we do recommend approval for these next week. Now, the element in your own, PKCD, PKCD provides gun range coverage, which came in at four thousand seven hundred and three dollars. This is no change from last year. And for the age of our range, it's fairly well. Commercial property, commercial property for college this year comes in at nine million ninety-seven thousand dollars, and that only provides coverage for one hundred million of our three hundred and thirty and property value. You see this increase from this first layer due to several factors. One, the number of wind and hill damage claims across the state of Texas, the age of our buildings, current market volatility, and various other factors. Our firm that we've been using, PKCD, notified that AFM Global was no longer going to provide coverage for us due to them getting out of the first market. They went back out to the market and submitted our proposition for coverage. All the insurance companies or underwriters turned CTC down because of our local risk, and the only one that would take us on was Travelers Insurance, but their caveat is they will only provide a hundred million in coverage. So for the other two hundred and thirty-three million, our brokerage is looking for other underwriters who would take that amount on. It would be a lower premium, but somewhere in the ballpark of, they were estimating anywhere from five hundred thousand to a million dollars extra. We are looking at other ways to mitigate this here in the near future. As we've talked with our brokerage companies, this is something that over the next several years, until the market takes a turn, it's going to continue to increase once commercial property. And we've seen the same thing with some of our partners here in the local areas going through the same thing this year. Is there any questions?
We just ran forward a option year four for Texas Materials Group, we're looking to exercise this option. As you know, Texas Materials is a company that we've used, et cetera. We don't currently have anything that's listed or identified on the current capital plan, but as we're doing other A D A project improvements and other patchwork and stuff across campus, this gives us a little bit of flexibility to continue to utilize that. This is the fourth and final option year, and so after this, we'll be issuing the RFP, save the vendors' potential to be up in on that. So we would be bringing a recommendation to approve option year four on Tuesday.
Thanks, sir. I'm recommending, thanks for upcoming, Ken, but just like the rainy day fund, to see what we're looking at, so make sure. But this year, going back, rainy day fund against that.
In the, in the summation, I would not believe that's too unfortunate.
Yeah, million, right.
I don't know that. Yeah, I think we've turned that, put the formula, you know, that would get through that, you, some emphasis on that, actually, yeah. Then at this, well, a reason why we're not getting out there, sure, students, doing something wrong, correct, change the direction, maybe change the direction, or open gap to programs, or marketing, we need to do other, whatever, text, thank you. Formally, ask for the, what you got.
I must be considered, must be not, with Chancellor Merit's status.
Yes, you got all that, yeah. And we are, your boss, so we're the ones that have to bring that recommendation for approval, and thank you for that.
The better. Document on that, it's a deviation to the policy. We have a document, I can say, that, 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 that can be, yes, thank you.
Need it, we just need a correction. Okay, anybody else? Remember, next week, we have a, 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 a,